It's my pleasure to welcome you again today as we gather as a group of county commissioners to undertake the spending of the taxpayers' money. I call this meeting to order. Let's have our roll call, please. And let's stand, and Mr. Gash, will you lead us with the pledge? And Mr. McGlaughlin, I mean with the invocation, Mr. Gash, and Mr. McGlaughlin with the pledge.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you this morning for your many blessings upon us. We thank you now for the opportunity we have as a group of citizens to assemble together and focus on the business of our great county. We thank you for each one that is in our audience this morning, for each one of these county commissioners around this table. We pray, Father, that you might give us the wisdom, the discernment, the knowledge to make those decisions that are best for the citizens that we represent. These blessings we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Put the flag, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
No.
Second, let's vote. All right, Mr. Manager, it's your game.
Mr. Chairman.
Melvin, oh, you, Epstein.
I know, I could you correct that.
I will.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members. It's a pleasure to once again stand before you and to present to you the recommended operating budget for the next fiscal year, that being 2014, 2015. Before you, you've got two documents like you always have as we do this process. You've got a copy of the PowerPoint that I'll go through, and also you have a binder booklet, a binder booklet that has the corresponding tables and charts in it. I'm gonna do my best to try to be a little more concise than I have been in years past and maybe a little speedier or quicker through the presentation. If you need me to slow down, please ask me to, but I may end up just taking as much time as the past, so I'm gonna try to be a little more concise because I know this does get lengthy. It is a $200 million-plus budget that does deserve time to go over, but do want to hold your attention and hold the public's attention as well. If you look in the binder on the first page, there's an index that basically tells you all the material in the binder. The first thing is the remaining budget calendar, additional steps we'll be taking in the next month, month and a half. Then you have an overview of the preliminary budget for all funds, an overview for just the general fund. You then have a section on the revenue review, you have a section on expenditure review, you'll have a section on human resources, then the last part of it will be the CIP, your capital improvement plan. So with that being said... The priorities of the board of county commissioners as adopted by you as a board, I'm not gonna read all these statements, but in essence, they are, number one, education, number two, safety, number three, economic development, four, health and welfare, and then facility and space needs, infrastructure improvements, and recreational activities. Those are the ongoing priorities that you as a board have adopted in developing the overall operating budget. Myself and the finance director, Dwayne Holder, weigh the requests against what the priorities are and try to honor the priorities you have set for the county. On the next slide, the following factors are what we've considered in developing the budget. These statements are phrases or statements that we've used in the past, more notably the recent past, as we've come out of the recession and have created and continued to forge what we call the base budget, and that base budget being those services from the current year that we felt needed to be continued. We continued with the concept of right sizing in terms of a budget approach, in terms of right sizing the services with the need and with the revenues that we can apply towards those. And then the next concept, that being a structural balance, that basically being that your expenditures are meeting your revenues and that we're not dipping into fund balance to fund ongoing reoccurring expenditures. This budget reflects ongoing recovery in the overall local economy, even though minimal, and I'll cover that in a moment, utilizes growth in the tax base of reoccurring revenues. There's good news in that respect. As I told the department heads, with this budget process, there's good news and there's bad news. The good news is that our tax base is stable, it is growing, we can continue with the base budget. I've told them the bad news is the base is not growing that much. It's very minimal in terms of growth in ad valorem taxes, sales taxes, and other revenues as such as we have. This budget also proposes an alternative revenue source for the service expansion, for animal control. I'll get into that within the presentation. Continuing on the overall budget overview, this budget proposes to maintain the ad valorem tax rate at 68 cents. It continues a limited fund balance appropriation where we do not plan on spending fund balance other than in the one instance of animal control expansion, and I'll elaborate on that later on. It increases Pitt County schools, Pitt Community College current expense funding, again provides for animal control expansion, provides a 1.5% market adjustment or COLA to the workforce. This would be only half of the year, beginning January 1, 2015, so annualized, you're really talking 3/4 of a percent adjustment. This budget also delays opening of E Block at the detention center for one more year. In terms of the all funds overview, this would be all funds of that 200 million-plus budget, actually 215 million, $151,000 budget. The table there in, on the PowerPoint also corresponds to Table 2 in your binder. There's more of a detailed breakout in that, in the binder. For this year, in the current year we stand, we have an overall budget of 211,365,000 compared to the 215,151,000. The percent change year-over-year is 1.79%. There's also a corresponding table on Page 10 in the binder as well that corresponds back to this chart. On the next slide, the general fund, that being a fund within all funds, which is the primary driver that drives your ad valorem tax rate for the next fiscal year. The overall departmental requests, we had 160,796,478 dollars worth of new requests, roughly about $10 million in new requests. The probably top four ticket items in there of departments asking or agencies asking for new dollars, we had Pitt County schools at 2.2 million in additional requests, the sheriff's office at roughly $2 million also in additional requests, Pitt Community College roughly 450,000, and then DSS roughly 550,000. Those are written, and then from that, there were other requests as well, but I'm not gonna elaborate on those. In terms of reductions that I made in the budget through the process of meeting with all the department heads, met with everybody at least once, others multiple times to get down to the recommended budget, I reduced by the factor of 8.2 million dollars worth of those requests for additional new dollars. So my preliminary proposed budget is 152,608,665. The revenues projected include $2 million of the fund balance plug that we expect to come back, $415,000 of a one-time appropriation of fund balance for animal control expansion only for fiscal year 2014-15, and I'll explain later on how year two and so forth, how I propose to recommend to you to fund the animal control expansion. The tax rate within the general fund, general fund would be held constant at the .6730, and then the balance that goes to the development commission, seven tenths of a cent. The adopted budget for this year was 149,781,122, so the percent change is a 1.89% change. This, this slide corresponds with Page 3 and Page 9 within your binder. Moving on, looking at the general fund itself, general government had a, has a total of Public health, 9.5, almost 9.6 million, DSS, 31, almost 32 million, court facilities, 280,000, mental health, 587,500, for a total of 152,608,665. Again, this is the fund that is the primary driving force of the ad valorem tax rate. In terms of a revenue review of this budget, this slide here corresponds to Page 4 in your booklet. Again, the current rate is 68 cents per $100 assessed evaluation, so just in the context of $100,000 house, $100,000 house would have a tax bill of $680 based upon a 68-cent tax rate. The proposed rate is recommending to hold that at 68 cents. Distribution, again, .673 to the general fund, and then seven tenths of a penny to industrial development, which holds that constant. In terms of the tax base itself, the ad valorem tax base, the current tax base in this year is $11.9 billion, but keep in mind, the next line under that is an adjusted tax base of 11.6 billion, because we really had to take out 300 million to account for the tax and tag program where we had one-time revenues coming in. So technically, as we compare one tax base to the next, we really like to compare the adjusted tax base for the current year compared to the next year's tax base at 11.2 billion dollars. So there's about 114,889,000 in growth in the tax base when you adjust for the tax and tag program, and that's a little less than 1% growth in that ad valorem tax base. As I told the board probably a good month or so ago, we were expecting all overall revenues to grow about 1%. Now, this doesn't include sales tax and other fees coming in, but it is indicative of the overall revenue scenario that we're looking at. That 1% versus, and that 1% is equivalent of about a million, 1.1 million dollars compared to $10 million in requests. So the real task of this budget was to pare down the requests to the available revenues without raising taxes. The sales tax scenario on the next slide, I guess maybe I didn't put this one up when I was talking, I apologize. So again, this slide for the public's benefit, again, current tax rate, proposed tax rate shows the proposed distribution, shows the, the tax base at 11.9 billion with tax and tag. The next line, 11.6 billion, is without tax and tag. The third line is the tax base, as we're seeing it for July 1 of the new year, 11.7 billion dollars for that net difference of 114 million, again, representing a little less than 1% growth in that tax base. Now, on the next slide for sales tax, we're looking for a modest change in sales tax revenues. We actually started out at about 2% scenario in sales tax revenue growth, and we bumped that up to 3%, feeling confident that we would meet that based upon the estimates that we're hearing from the state association of county commissioners and feel like that that will be a realistic projection on sales tax. On the next slide, the annual ABC board performance, this is the slide that basically shows going back from 2007 up to June 30 of 2013, what their net profit has been year-to-year, what the payment to the county has been, how much they've added to their working capital, and then their addition to working capital, then their total working capital. Right now, we are still at a 1.1 million distribution from the ABC board to the county into the general fund for overall operations. We have not asked or considered to increase that. That might be a go-to source possibly, maybe, maybe not, in terms of if you're looking for another $100,000. We have a meeting with the ABC board this week, I believe, with the staff to review their quarterly financials and probably make a better determination at that point. I do know, as you're aware, they've opened a new store, they've got debt service on that store, they had one-time expenses on furnishing that store, and they've got some other stores they're trying to rehab in terms of painting and carpet and shelving and so forth. On the next slide, this is revenue growth summary. This is what I'm calling the total new revenue growth summary. This is the total revenue, total new revenue, when you look at the ad valorem taxes and sales taxes, again, 1,185,033. That's the total revenue across this $215 million budget that we had to allocate without proposing an increase to the ad valorem tax rate. All right, fund balance. The county's fund balance, as you're, as the board is aware, we have spent a number of years to rebuild our fund balance. We, we're on a watch list with one of the bond rating agencies in New York, Fitch, the Fitch Rating Agency, in terms of how we had spent our fund balance down to, I think, a little more than 12% a number of years ago. We have successfully built that fund balance back up to where it's in a very healthy range. We are projecting at the end of June 30 of this current fiscal year to be at approximately 18.92%, and that is a conservative estimate, I guess I could say, might be, I think we're saying that's the minimum it will be. As you can see, we, at June 30 of 2013, we were at 15.26, so at the low, we were at the 12.07 in '11, build it almost to 13.69 the next year, 15.26, and then plan on landing on 18.92 or better come June 30 of 2014, the current year we're in. We're happy and proud to report, we believe our fund balance is, is back to a stable place where it should be. Counties of comparable size have fund balances of 20% or greater. Your board adopted policy is to be between 18 and 20. And that, that slide refers to Page 7 in your binder, if you want to see a bigger blow-up of that table. There's also a bar chart, and I believe we showed the, or not bar chart, but a graph on the next page, on the next slide, showing where during the, as we were coming out of the recession in 2009, '10, '11, as we used and consumed fund balance, then we, starting in '11, when we got put on the watch list, we then had the, the goal and the decisive actions to build it back up, and we have accomplished that. In terms of fee, fee increases that are proposed in this, this budget, let me run over these real quick. The, within animal control, the owner requested euthanasia fee. We're proposing that, right now, the fee is $15. We're proposing to increase that to $20. This corresponds to Page 8 in your binder. Terms of a dog license fee, these fees correspond to the expansion of service that the board has talked about with the canine control and need in order to fund that. These fees are recommended by the Animal Control Advisory Board as it goes along with the overall animal shelter, animal control operation, and the service expansion. So for a dog license for one year, for an altered dog, it'd be $10, unaltered, $20. For a three-year license, altered is 25, unaltered is 50. For specialty dog licenses, if you had 10, 20, 100 hunting dogs, we break out here, 21 and over would be $100, and five and 10 dogs, $45, 11 to 20 would be $70. Moving on to proposed fee changes for environmental health, there are, I believe Jim Brown had came before the board last fall and was asking for consideration of these fee changes, and as I recall, Dwayne, these were driven by, in Janus, by general statute, by the General Assembly. In terms of the restaurant, restaurant plan review for 20 seats or more, it's currently $200, it's proposed at $200, but if you see the footnote there, this will be for all restaurant reviews, and this will include food stands and mobile units. So on the next one there, restaurant plan review, less than 20 seats, currently $100 will be $200. They're basically uniform, making all these uniform be $200. The last one, the food stands, as I just mentioned, currently $75 will be $200. So all these different types of plan reviews for restaurants will be the flat $200, and again, this is driven by the General Assembly. That corresponds to, again, back to Page 8, as I had mentioned. Further, within environmental health, in terms of authorizations to construct permits for subject tank systems, they are, there were prior permits issued back to July 1, 2001. These fees were 50, 100, $150, depending upon the type 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, or 6 type of system. These are being eliminated. As I understand, these type of permits have expired, and that, so any permits would be taken out would be, fall under the existing fee schedule that is in, in place. And then the last one for environmental health is for a swimming, swimming pool plan review for additional waiting pools or spas as such at the initial application. They're basically eliminating that, says eliminates fee due to demand slash request for waiting pools. I believe that gets folded back into other existing fees. All right, moving on to expenditure review. Again, this budget expands or proposes to expand animal control services. In parentheses here on this, on the screen, I've tried to put in the key words of your priorities, how this matches your, your priorities as adopted by the board. Obviously, animal control falls under public safety. Increases to Pitt County schools for their current expense falls under education, your number one goal. The first one there, public safety is number two goal. Increase to the county appropriation to DSS falls under health and welfare as your goal or priority. Increase to Pitt Community College current expense falls under education. Increase staffing to the sheriff department, even though minimal, it falls under public safety. Increase county appropriation to public health, again, falls under health and welfare. And the last one, increasing staffing to the communications center in this building, the 911 center falls under public safety. The other expenditure highlights, again, the 1.5% COLA for the employees, annualized at 3/4% per year, and then we continue the vehicle replacement plan that we have in place, and we propose to purchase approximately 25 vehicles like we've done the last couple On the next slide before you is an expenditure of all funds. This corresponds to Pages 9 and 10 in your booklet, and basically, this is all the funds broken out totaling the 215,151,511 dollars of expenditures. The next two slides are actually a breakout of that first line that says general fund at 152 million, that's currently before you. The next two slides breaks out the totality of that 152 million dollars, and that is, again, cross-reference back to Pages 9 and 10 in your booklet. This basically, going on to the next slide here, again, a breakout of the general fund, that first line of the pink slide I just had before you is showing every department, showing their actual 2012, 13, where they landed, their original budget from this year, their revised budget from this year, what the request is, what my recommendation is, what the percent change is, and what the dollar change is per department. And, Dwayne, as I recall, we did back out of these numbers, that portion of the one-time, we had, the $300 million in tax base yielded us about $2.1 million in additional ad valorem taxes for this year. This backs out of the base, correct, the original budget, those numbers or not?
It does not.
It does not, okay, so it's still in there. But we did account for that in looking at every single department. We need to make sure that, as we talked about their, their base level budget for last year, that it didn't include the one-time expenditures for whatever it may have been, that we had a realistic base, not an inflated base. Again, the next slide is just the continuation of that general fund, again, totaling the Moving on to education funding, this will cover the Pitt County schools and Pitt Community For Pitt County schools, their current year for 2013, 14, current expense allocation is 34.7 million dollars. We appropriate $750,000 to Capital I, II, and III items, and then the rent agreement for this building for a total of 35,862,287. They had requested a total in that second column there of 38,67,604. That was actually a dollar increase of 2,241,317. I'm recommending of that 227,000. Again, remember, we only had 1.1 million in increased revenues to allocate across all internal and external agencies. The percent increase that they had asked for represented 6.45%. Basically, I'm giving them .65. Of the, of the amount that I'm recommending, the 227,000, that represents 10% of, basically of their request. On the next slide for Pitt Community College, again, their 13, 2013, 2014 current budget between the current expense and Capital I, II, and III, you had allocated 5,170,326. Their request, total request for the new year is 5,622,213. They're asking for 451,887 in new additional dollars for the new year. My recommendation is 113,444. That's technically 25% of what they were asking for. It may not seem equitable to, in terms of, of dollars or percentages, to give PCC 25% compared to Pitt County schools, but you gotta realize you're dealing with more money in one than, than the other, so I feel it is equitable. In your booklet, on Pages 12 through 15, you'll find the annual NCACC, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, current expense survey for all 100 counties, for how each county appropriates funding to local school districts, well, actually, to the, within each county. There's more school districts than there are counties. I believe there's about 116 districts, even though there's 100 counties. The information we have compares county over county. Pitt County, based upon June 30 data of last year, we were at the 45th position where your current expense, based upon an ADM, average daily membership, is $1,471 per student in the system. Again, then on Page 14 and 15, we give you information about the 58 community college systems or campuses across the state. This is the North Carolina Community College System County Financial Support Survey, and on that one, you'll see that Pitt County comes in at, we're ranked number 44 out of 58, and we currently support the community college at $620 per student attending at the community Moving on to, well, before I move on, did you want to point on, on Page 16, I don't have a slide for this, but Page 16 within your, your binder is the affiliate agency funding, and just wanted to note for, majority of these are flat on the, well, actually, all of the nonprofit sustaining agencies at the bottom half of that chart are neutral or flat, no decreases, no increases, but staying the same year-over-year. The top portion being our affiliate agencies. There are some proposed changes. Sherpa Memorial Library, basically, they are asking for 20,699 in new dollars. It's being recommended to give them 10,349. Then the other major one there to talk about is the Council on Aging, had asked for 6,590, and had recommended half of that at 3,295. Now, moving on to EMS and fire funding. In terms of EMS, the budget considerations include the approval by the EMS Oversight Committee into the EMS budget as they do on an annual basis, and as well as they meet throughout the year to review the system and its performance and expenditures and requests of the, the different EMS squads. It is based upon a 4.6 cent EMS rate that is held constant, not increased nor decreased. It increases funding allocation for the seven nonprofit squads and the two county-operated squads. It increases and expands the capital improvement replacement plan for vehicles that the system has been utilizing, as well as I believe they had completed the cycle, the current planning cycle, and are embarking upon a new replacement cycle. On the next slide for the EMS budget, this corresponds to Page 17 in your binder, you'll see a larger breakout of this. This basically takes you to the recommended total expenditures within the EMS fund of 5,294,131, and again, that fund is balanced based upon a tax rate of 4.6 cents. In terms of the fire districts, on the next slide, this corresponds, corresponds to Page 18 in your binder. You'll see that we give all of the 20 different... You'll see that we give all of the 20 different nonprofit volunteer fire squads budget information. We give the, an estimate of their, their value of their district in the first column. We give their current rate that is in place for this current year, what their proposed rate is, what the levy will yield, their total budget request, and then whether they're going to propose purchasing a tanker or a, pardon me, pumper, tanker or pumper in the new year. Those squads that do, the county traditionally will allocate 10,000 dollars every 20 years towards the purchase of, of that type of major equipment. So on the next slide, I break out those, those departments that are asking for a rate adjustment. We have three of them. The first one being Belvoir, going from a current 1.89 cent to 2.25. Fountain, going from a five-cent rate to 6.75. Pactolus, going from 4, 4.25 cents to 6.25 cents. Moving on to the area of animal control. This budget as proposed, and as obviously the board, you as a board have been working with and have, have developed with staff and also the input of the Animal Control Advisory Board, the expansion of animal control services within Pitt County, specifically that being a, a fully fledged canine control ordinance. This budget as proposed does fully fund that ordinance and the shelter operations to support that. We do have the animal shelter on your agenda for this week to more, go into more detail on this, but did want you to know that that is accounted for. Right now, the, we're proposing a, an enforcement date or an effective date of January 1, 2015 to give staff time to gear up. There'll be some hiring prior to that and some training of staff, as well as animal control needs the ability to educate the public in regards to what the new ordinance is, how it will be enforced, and what it means to the individual pet owners. So in terms of an expansion overview, this adds three animal control officers in advance of ordinance for enforcement. So these would come on prior to the, the January 1. It adds 8.5 shelter staff to meet statutory requirements and accommodate more dog intakes, because we do anticipate dog intakes will definitely increase. It adds department office staff for telephone office coverage and dog licensing activities. Increases management support. It projects a dog licensing revenue that I talked about earlier when we, we talked about the new or additional changes in, in fees. This is, the dog licensing is currently is for unincorporated Pitt County. We do want to, as staff and with the board's consent and, and direction to, in this year, talk to the municipalities about having them maybe buy an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, implement this dog licensing within the municipalities to help support the shelter operations, specifically being the shelter itself, not necessarily the, the operating cost, but the physical shelter and the fact that their dogs are coming into the shelter just like our dogs are coming into it. If not, then we may have to look at alternative, they may need to look at alternative means of housing animals. We may have to cap the number of animals they can bring in or charge them more for those animals coming in. This expansion assumes utilization of this existing facility. It also anticipates a much-needed expansion, shelter expansion space needed to accommodate the volume of dogs that would come in with the full-fledged enforcement of the canine control. Again, you'll hear more from Michelle Whaley later in the week on this and what we anticipate for year one operations in terms of what that may do to adoptions and euthanasia rate, and then compared to maybe year two and three, once we level out, if we get the shelter expanded, and how, how everything will, will flow and function. So on the expansion review, again, it proposes a one-time utilization of fund balance at 415,000 dollars just for next year. And with a, a fund balance at 18.92%, we normally do not look to allocating money out of fund balance for reoccurring expenses, but I do have a, a plan here, the proposal to put before you. As you may have already read down through this, beginning in the next fiscal year for 15, 16, I am proposing or recommending to commit to a reduction in the discount rate that is currently 2%, bringing it down to, to 1%. That'll yield about 400,000 dollars, which in effect will pay for the lion's share of expansion to animal control services. Again, that next bullet, I think I've already hit, discussing with municipalities for county-wide dog licensing. And then we will begin for the planning, for the facility expansion of the shelter itself. One thing that this proposal does not include at this point in time is what I had mentioned to you a month or two back about partnering with the Humane Society, the Humane Society of Eastern North Carolina. We have reviewed their proposal. They have came before the Animal Control Advisory Board, I believe, two times. And it has been determined that we don't believe that they have the, the capacity to take on the, the number of animals we want them to take on. They have a different philosophy in terms of being a no-kill shelter. The number of dogs, the number of days that they keep a dog before they will, before it's adopted is probably 40, 41 days compared to ours is, was 11 or 12, 12 days. At this point, we just are, don't believe the savings that we thought were going to be there are going to be there. And really did not want to predicate moving into this expansion on a false premise that would not be realized. Or if we did go into it with them, we felt like in year two or year three, they would come back and ask for more money that would, than it would be justified to continue that arrangement. All right, shifting to another area of the budget, human resources. In terms of new position requests, we have had 93 new positions requested. Right now, this, this budget recommends 49.25 within the sheriff's office, 1, 1.75 positions. The three-quarters time position is a grant position, dealing with domestic homicide and pre-trial coordination. I was recommending to keep that. And then there's one for a court deputy that I'm recommending. Communications, we're looking at taking, they have currently two part-time positions that were approved in the current budget this year. We're recommending to take those two part-time positions to full-time. So that's the equivalent of, of one FTE. With an animal control, currently today, there are five full-time equivalent positions in animal control. There are also a, a good number of volunteers who work for free as a volunteer on top of that five. We're proposing additional 14.5 positions. Again, you'll hear from Michelle Whaley later in the week. You might say, my gosh, what, how could it take 14.5 positions? But I think you, we'll need to realize, we're talking about animal control will not be a eight-to-five function, but it will be, we'll have staff on call, we'll be going out on nights and weekends, and it will be much, much more involved, and your volume, volume of dogs will dramatically increase as well. Within social services, recommending 31 positions. We will be hearing from, from the interim director, Earl Merritt. We, I guess, just to disclose, we still have some questions on, we're, we're going to meet with Mr. Merritt again later today to make sure that the, the funding scenario that he's talking about utilizing fate and federal and state dollars is realistic, that there's nothing that's going to come and, and have an effect on us in fiscal year 15, 16. But right now, based upon 75% federal or state funds, they're saying they can accommodate 31 new positions. We may, we may come back and report, to modify that, or we may come back to report that, yes, that is a, a solid number. This has been one budget that we've been working with on, not a daily basis, but probably an every-other-day basis with Mr. Merritt and Peggy Quinn, his finance officer. Within solid waste, which is an enterprise fund, they're asking for one additional position, which is funded by that, that fund. On the next slide, the benefit calculation rates for the different benefits within the county. This refers to page 20 in your binder. And you'll see the retirement there for, as it breaks out for local government and law enforcement. You can see that the, for local government, it's staying flat. For law enforcement, it is increasing slightly. The, with, for the retirement, for the 401K, for the local government, it is increasing slightly. And then for law enforcement, it's remaining flat. These numbers are, are driven, not internally, but these numbers are driven as we're required to fund this on a statewide basis. For life insurance, you'll see that the, the rate that we, we have to fund within each department has increased slightly, and that is due to plan experience, deaths of employees and/or people who are on the plan, who maybe if an employee has their family member on the plan. So those are, that rate is up slightly, again, based upon plan experience. On the hospitalization insurance part of this, the EPFMP acronym is what we call the Employee Participation Fee Minimization Program. As you recall, the employees, if you don't participate in that program, you're, you're required to pay 40 dollars a month towards your health plan costs. And the total cost to the county currently is 596 dollars per month. If an employee does participate in that plan, and they earn the number of six required points per the program, then they can have a reduced participation cost of 20 dollars per month. It is being proposed that the 20 dollars for those who are compliant with their, their points remain at 20 dollars, and those who are not, increased by 16 dollars per month to 56 dollars. So from 40 to 56. In terms of the last entry there on that, that screen, that box, the employee max out-of-pocket, we are proposing an increase in that in order to keep the fund healthy as such. We've not had an increase in health rates in, I think, six years, and that is unheard of. Remember, this is a self-insured plan. We do not go out and buy health insurance on, on the market. Blue Cross Blue Shield does administrate this plan for us. We pay for the costs on a weekly basis, and I believe about 150,000 a week, Dwayne? Health, health plan costs, about 150,000 a week on average?
Thereabouts, yes, sir.
So we are proposing for a, an out-of-pocket, that for an individual, go from 2,500 to 3,000. So that is an increase. And then for the family, from 5,000 to 6,000. That sounds dramatic, but we are also trying to, to stay compliant with PPACA, the otherwise known as the slang term Obamacare, the, the federal health insurance program. Right now, we are on the edge or verge of being called a Cadillac plan, because our, our plan is so rich and healthy and benefits to what we offer the employees. If we remain a Cadillac plan, we're going to be taxed on top of what we already are paying. This is one thing that will allow us to become a less-rich plan, to increase our deductibles or out, or out-of-pocket by 500 dollars for the individual and 1,000 dollars for the, for the family. One new thing going into July 1 next year is that currently, your co-pays, when you go to, for a doctor's visit, whether you pay the 20 dollars or 40 dollars, do not count as part of your out-of-pocket. Come July 1, they will. Unless, under PPACA, there are certain co-pays for certain preventive screenings that we're required to provide for free at no cost to the employee. So that, that wouldn't count. But we're thinking on average, that if you can start counting your co-pays that you are required to pay, that will probably make up that 500 dollar difference for the, the individual, and then probably for the family as well. But if we, by, by making this change, we're actually going to, going to save about 187,000 dollars that we were able to drive into the plan to prevent us from increasing overall premiums, that 596 dollars per month that we pay this year. A year from now, we probably, if we have the same plan experience, we probably will have to look at an increase in premiums. But we've, you know, again, six years, no increase in, in health insurance premiums in this day and age and environment that's just unheard of. Moving on to the next slide. In terms of a market adjustment or a cost of living increase for employees, we give you a recap going back to 2004, 2005 to current. You can see there is a number of years from 2009 to 2013 that we provided no cost of living. In some cases, there was, there was no adjustment on the January to January CIP that's, that's published by the, the federal government. This year, we are proposing the 1.5, again, annualized at, at 0.75%. I am proposing on the merit plan, and as you recall, in, in past years, when we had money to, to fund merit on a monetary basis, depending upon what your performance score is on your performance evaluation, your work performance, if you scored at a certain score, at a 3.0 or 3.55, depending upon how long, how long you'd been here and where you were on the salary plan, you were eligible for either a 2.4% salary increase or a 1.2% salary increase. Well, we don't have the funds to do that. It would cost, I believe, it's 400,000, 600,000 dollars to fully fund the merit plan. And again, with only 1.1 million dollars in total revenue growth, we don't have the, the money to, to fund that. So I am proposing to do like we did this year, to do a non-monetary compensation to the employees, basically personal leave hours, again, based upon your PEP, your PEP score, which is your Partners for Effective Performance. And if you meet the, the score, you'd either get eight hours or 16 hours of comp, of personal leave time or vacation time. I think the workforce really appreciated having something rather than nothing, something to acknowledge their, their work performance. It also gives the employees and supervisors some incentive to fully conduct performance reviews in, in an environment where there's no monetary opportunity to award the employees. With that being said, I've asked Dwayne if he would cover the next piece on the capital improvement plan, then I'll come back and get the tail end.
Good morning. On pages 24 through 26 of your binder, you'll have some larger versions of our capital improvement plan. But we wanted to start off by kind of doing a review of the information that we provided for you at your February planning, capital planning meeting. Just a review that, to remember that in concept, what we're looking at moving to, not in this year, but what we wanted to prepare you for was to look at our capital planning in a little more defined manner. Capital, we wanted to take more of a capital budgeting approach. And just, just a reminder that capital budgeting, it actually creates a, a legal document that's adopted with an ordinance that contains funding sources and appropriations for capital assets that exceed a selected financial amount. And we'll talk about that capital budget threshold that we're proposing. Otherwise, they're purchased in the operating budget. A lot of our capital items right now are purchased through our operating budget. And that has some impact on our, on things like our fund balance, et cetera. The capital budgeting process that we, again, would be looking at moving toward is first identifying the assets that we want to include in the budget. And those would be identified by looking at, first of all, the dollar amount, and then, second of all, the useful life of that asset. The second step would be evaluating the assets from a departmental perspective. Each department would evaluate that particular item or project. Following that, we would prioritize those assets from an overall organizational perspective. We'd work to identify the funding sources, and then we would implement the actual capital budget. For fiscal year 14, 15, there, all that we're proposing are some initial incremental steps toward building toward that overall capital budgeting process. First of all, we want to increase our CIP or capital improvement threshold from 50,000 to 100,000. If you recall, our, our traditional CIP, which is the chart that's found on pages 24, 25, our threshold, minimum threshold for inclusion in that CIP is 50,000 dollars. It has been that for a, a great number of years, and we want to look at increasing that threshold, because when we look at things like materiality or the amount of an actual item, it, it, the value of things has changed over the years. And we think that in order for something to be substantial, we want, we want to put a floor of 100,000 rather than 50,000. What used to cost 50,000 dollars 10 or 15 years ago has changed significantly today. Also, we would like to increase, and this is included in our capital purchasing policy, we would like to increase the capitalization threshold from threshold from five thousand to ten thousand. And this is basically what we identify as the county's fixed assets, if you're familiar with that terminology. Uh, and it, and when something is categorized as a fixed asset, it, uh, kicks into, into gear a series of requirements, everything from, uh, taking a, an actual photograph of it, it being, uh, physically audited each year. There's a number of requirements that go along with what we identify as fixed assets. And we want to, uh, increase the threshold. Again, this is an update, uh, taking into consideration, uh, the values change over the, the many years that it's been set at five thousand. And then finally, we want you to recommend to continue working on a capital budgeting process for Pitt County and begin using that in fifteen sixteen. So we would continue to, uh, go through the process, those steps that we, uh, looked at here in the budgeting process in this next year, anticipating implementation of it in fifteen sixteen. The next slide, uh, actually puts into, uh, your familiar, uh, format, those capital items or projects that have been requested by departments. And those departments are inclusive of not only internal county departments, but they also include external, uh, agencies like Pitt County Schools and Pitt Community College. And you'll see that we've actually pulled those out separately, uh, for isolation and viewing. I just want to say, overall, included in this CIP, there are, uh, two hundred and thirty-three million dollars worth of capital items ident, or projects identified in this total CIP. Now, this ranges from current year requests all the way out to what we t, uh, term as future years, which is ten years or more. But, uh, as departments annually review their needs, and we anticipate capital needs for the county, as well as solicit those needs from the school system and Pitt Community College, we're currently sitting at over two hundred and thirty-three million dollars of identified needs. Uh, we, we are proposing to, in this next year, to take a more thorough look at these projects and items, to, um, uh, do a, a very detailed analysis and, of, of the, the requests, and to start actually putting in more programming of some of these items. Uh, it may be that as we go through this, these lists, that some of the things that have been requested, you decide not to put it into the CIP. Um, I, I think that, uh, that would be, uh, a possible outcome of, uh, of a more detailed planning process. Uh, one of the things that we did include in the CIP, uh, this year, and we did it as somewhat of a placeholder, if you'll look at the fourteen fifteen requested year, uh, down under public safety, you'll see emergency management, radio paging upgrades. Uh, and this next slide talks about the paging system. Uh, as you all know, the consultant study is still in progress, and, uh, we have added that one million dollar placeholder in our CIP, uh, for those system, uh, upgrades and enhancements. So we wanted to be able to track it, identify it, and, uh, have some plan in place, uh, for it. And, uh, there is some good news. We actually do have some, uh, radio project funds still available in the fund, that we would anticipate, uh, going toward, uh, the cost, uh, of the enhancements. And I think that, that fund is currently sitting at approximately, uh, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So, uh, that, that, that's good, that we've, that's actual money that we wouldn't have to ident, to find. It's actually, uh, dedicated in the fund as it stands right now.
In regard to the two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, technically, when we completed the project, we had actually, you know, we took a loan out on that project. We were down to about zero dollars in that fund. But we had a sales tax refund that came in based upon sales tax paid on the project. So that's how we got a balance in that fund. The million dollars that Dwayne talks about, the placeholder, we don't know if it's going to be a quarter million, one million, one-point-five million. I would like to, to be optimistic. I think it'd be within that two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, he, he said. But I, at this point, the jury's out on that. Um, Phil Dickerson is taking the lead on this project as the county engineer. We still have Kimball engaged in this process, as well as working with all of the, um, chiefs of the, the fire departments and EMS squads, as well as the emerg, emergency management staff. Um, we, in talking to Phil this week, we anticipate coming back to you with a report, hopefully a report by the engineer, probably in late June. So we'll have a better idea as to what the fix will be on this system. Um, kind of wrapping up this presentation this morning, the next part is called a look forward. Just kind of a, a brief snapshot of possibly fiscal year fifteen sixteen, some things to consider that we see out there that we'll have to contend with. Animal control expansion, if you, um, if you were to accept my recommendation to fund year one, as I proposed this morning, um, year two would need to definitely be out of a reoccurring, um, um, revenue source. And, um, again, that is being proposed to adjust the discount rate from two percent to one percent. Part of the rationale on that is, right now, um, hardly, probably none of us, I didn't say hardly any of us, but none of us are making two percent on money that we have in the bank as, as such. That, so it's really, i- in the current fiscal environment, we, we believe that people will still pay early, even with a one percent discount. Keep in mind, the great majority of taxes that are paid are by banking institutions who hold escrows on mortgages, who are required to pay, as I understand it, at the lowest point, or the, the least expensive point. So they would be required to forward those, um, the, the tax payments to the county in August, in any case, whether it's two percent or one percent. Um, the third bullet there, Pitt Community College expansion, the, um, um, bond referendum that was passed, that does have a, um, uh, almost a one-point-nine cent tax, um, rate cons, consequence or, or to it in terms of retiring that debt service on, on those, uh, bonds. Education funding for Capital One, Two, and Three, um, this budget is continuing a practice that started last year, and that being taken for, like, for Pitt County Schools. Of the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's appropriated, fifty percent of that is coming out of general fund, fifty percent of that is coming out of the, um, quarter cent sales tax. The same thing for Pitt Community College with their seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, detention center capacity, I don't really know, I mean, other than just, um, being blessed as a county, that, uh, we haven't had to open E Block yet. I really would have thought that this year we would have to open it, but we've been unfortunate that even though they're, they're at capacity and maybe a little bit above it, I really believe that next year we're going to have to be faced with opening that. If, if there was, I guess on the, um, the two percent discount rate, if there was any, going back to that and going back to animal control expansion, under scenario, if animal control just fell apart, and you decided just to keep doing what you're doing, I would still recommend you reduce the discount rate from two percent to one percent. And if nothing else, use that freed-up capacity, four hundred thousand dollars, to, to open half, half the funding cost of E Block. Um, and then the other half, we would have to, um, identify within the, uh, existing revenue stream, or look at a tax increase to open that. And the last bullet point there being merit pay. Again, we haven't had merit pay in, um, four or five years. So with that, that is the, um, proposed operating budget for next year, for fiscal year two thousand fourteen fifteen. I would like to, um, thank Dwayne and his staff, Shelley and Denise, um, for their hard work, as well as all the hard work of the departments, who have, this is a long process, that, that compiling all of the, the requests, and then meeting with, um, submitting to finance, meeting with Dwayne and, and myself and the staff, and then compiling it to this point before you, is a very long, laborious process. But it's probably one of the most important things we do in the year. So, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to do questions or...
Are there any questions at this time? Or do we want to wait until we get through the, uh, overall, uh, presentation? Or do you want to break it this time? It was a pleasure to board.
I'd rather see the stuff as it comes down before we do questions, and I would entertain a break.
Let's, let's have a, how long? Who's your next presenter, Scott?
I believe we have Pitt County, no, Dr. Massey, Pitt Community College.
Is he available?
Not yet.
Could you call him?
Sure.
And we'll have a fifteen-minute break. Is that pleased with the board?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott.
Thank you. We are now back in session, and, uh, appreciate the presenters coming upon our beck and call. We know it's a little early, but we want to expedite, to give everybody an opportunity to fully express themselves. And, uh, Mr. Manager, you made a good presentation on the overview that we've had. Uh, we'll take that and critique or whatever we feel over the period that we're staying here, and incorporate what we will receive from our presenters today. And at this time, uh, Mr. Manager, you, you want to call your next issue?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Board members, we have Dr. Dr. Massey, President of Pitt Community College, here to make a, um, presentation regarding their proposed budget allocation to the county.
Dr. Massey?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming early.
No problem. It's always a pleasure to come and talk with you. How, how's everybody today?
Well...
It's the day after the election, right? Um, it is a very joyous time for Pitt Community College. We've got penning ceremonies, we've got graduation next Monday. I hope you can attend, uh, East Carolina University's menjis. Uh, we have a very, uh, big class. But before I talk a little bit about that, I want to thank you, as commissioners, for your support of Pitt Community College. Uh, we would not be where we are with, without what you hadn't stepped up in the past year and in previous years to assist us. Uh, sometimes you may have gotten a little weary with my saying that, uh, Pitt is not measuring up to the standards of other schools. But I think it has prevailed, and we are continually striving to provide the support that students, business and industry, and other entities in our area want and need. And we, we must have, if we're going to realize the economic development, that I think is great potential. Yesterday, uh, Mr. Webb and a number of other people were at the Small Business Center Awards, and, uh, we cosponsor that. And it was, it was very positive to hear Ted Abernathy talk about the support that community colleges provide for areas like Pitt County, in terms of positioning themselves for the immediate future and the long-term future. I think it's a good investment, and I thank you for what you've done to help us.
I wanted to share with you this, uh, mailer. I don't know if you received that at your homes this, I think it was this weekend it was sent out. Um, the Continuing Education Program at Pitt Community College, which as you know is based at the Greenville Center, uh, the former McDrift Furniture Building on Memorial, uh, is a major part of what we do. I think I've explained to you before that, uh, the credit program gets a lot of attention, and certainly with the glory of the commencement ceremony coming up, uh, that's, that's appropriate. But the Continuing Ed Program that we have is just as large as the credit program. This past year, we had about eleven thousand five hundred credit students. We had over eleven thousand non-credit students, including Small Business Center participants, uh, people taking business and industry classes, certifications, job training, many, many, uh, ways that we're serving people in a short-term way. And you know, it's certainly a different population, but there's increasingly crossover between the credit and the non-credit area, particularly as we look at what they call stackable credentials, people getting certified in specific areas for job preparation or job advancement. And we want to be on the cutting edge of doing that. For the commencement on Tuesday, on Monday, uh, again, at seven PM on Monday, uh, May twelfth, uh, we will have seven hundred and fifty-four graduates, uh, being honored, and that's the highest number ever. Uh, it, I think, is a result of our focus on completion by design, which is a national effort funded by the Gates Foundation, to not only get students in the door of community colleges, but completing programs, completing degrees, completing certificates. And we're starting to see some success from that. Now, the summer activity is, uh, intense. Uh, it's not a downtime for community colleges. Uh, we have classes that start on May twenty-first, so, you know, not much of a break for our faculty or staff. And we're already registering people, not only for summer, but for fall. Uh, we've been able to maintain a level of enrollment, which is, uh, slightly above the spring, uh, two thousand thirteen level, which is counter to what's happening in many parts of North Carolina and the country. I think that's a testament to the breadth of programs, the quality of what we offer, and our sensitiveness to what the business and industry say they want people to have, and people's response to that. So I think that we are working hard to serve the areas of Pitt County. And we're seeing also, you might be interested in this, an increase in the percentage of Pitt County residents who are participating in credit programs. Uh, I mentioned the Continuing Education Program. Uh, one thing that is not listed in this booklet are the customized training programs for business and industry. Those are all grant-funded, and what happens there is, we can't list it in the book, but there's potential support that we provide for a number of companies in our area. And that, that amount is increasing significantly. Now, let me go on and talk a little bit about a specific item in your proposal that you have. Oops. Didn't show the picture of graduation. Anyway, this is the, uh, addition to the Craig Goaz Student Center. You probably remember that the Craig Goaz Student Center was built in two thousand six. It was funded by the, uh, State Construction Bond. Uh, that was, uh, shared by both the university system and the community colleges. We also had, uh, generous support from Mr. Craig Goaz of Greenville Toyota. But we did not have funds at that point to do everything we wanted to do in this one-stop-shop for student service. It has become increasingly the center of gravity, the center of the campus, and we're pleased at that. And with the growth we've had across Reedee Branch Road, I think that's appropriate. What we're doing with this expansion is a three-point-one million dollar project. It's about fifteen thousand square feet, and it's utilizing some local, uh, workers. Hudson Brothers has a contract for it. They're doing a fine job. Uh, and John Farkas is our, uh, architect for the, for the project. What goes into this project? Well, you can't tell right here, but, uh, there are basically three components. We're relocating our bookstore from the Vernon White Building to the Goaz Center. Appropriate, that's where students register. That's where they get their financial aid. That's where they get their counseling. The Vernon White is not a place where they normally go. We have a lot of instruction in that building. Uh, that's one component. Second component is a career center. Uh, we have, uh, announced that our Quality Enhancement Plan with our, uh, regional accreditor is career and academic planning, academic advising. And we, we wanted and needed to develop a component of this addition to focus on careers. We will, we are continuing to get a lot of local business and industry in to talk with people about work, uh, but we need to intensify, intensify that and expand it. A third component is a computer lab. Uh, we can't build enough computer access facilities on our campus. You know, a lot of people think, well, folks have computers at home, and they can access, uh, needed information and some coursework, uh, at their leisure. But the reality is, many of our students do not have computer access at home. And so we need to provide as much as possible that computer access on our campus. So this is a, a major project. We're well into it. Uh, what we have put in the budget, uh, and if you look on your, uh, budget that I think you have in your packet, uh, you will see that, uh, there is a hundred and two thousand dollars increase for this, excuse me, a hundred and fifty thousand... you will see that there is $102,000 increase for this, excuse me, $150,000 for this project, which includes the normal support that we have in any building for electricity, heat, water in sewer, custodial, maintenance, as well as public safety. We're also getting some additional parking spaces in this project. We did an alternate bid. And what you see here is the entrance to the addition, which is from the south. And then you can't see in this very well, but we are expanding the Goaz Center parking lot because that serves not only the Goaz Center, but it serves the Russell Building and the Leslie Building also. So this is one of the major parts of our proposed increase. We counseled with you. We thank you for your sign-off on this project. And now we're moving ahead with it. And we hope to be able to move into this facility the beginning of spring term. So early 2015. A second element to the proposed budget is something that is really related to our number of students and the age of our physical plant. That has to do with facilities, repairs, and renovations. We've done, over the years, a lot of this. We've got very good talent on our staff right now. I want to introduce a few of our staff members who are here. The person I was just referring to is Mr. Tim Strickland. He's Director of Facilities. We were able to lure him from Wilson Community College. And he's done a great job at developing plans for our facilities. I also have with us our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Ricky Brown, and our Interim Vice President for Administration, former Board of Trustees member, Randy Collier. What you see on the screen is a picture of the Witchard Building. We are in, this building has a 27-year history. And we are, we have several projects in the proposed budget that relate to this building. The fact is that we have some new buildings on our campus, but our campus is over 50 years old. The Vernon White Building is 50 years old. So there's going to be normal wear and tear with any of these buildings. And in addition, there are major systems that go down. Just a few months ago, well, two months ago, we suffered a major loss in the chiller of the Leslie Building that had to be replaced. That was in the middle of spring term. That was not an easy thing. We were able to bring in an interim piece of equipment. We ordered the main chiller. We had to dip into funds to do that. And what we're trying to do is, in advance, do some things that we know we have to address in the near future. The Witchard Building, as you see in front of you, named for Kay Witchard, our former Board of Trustees member, has major roof problems. And you'll notice in the proposed budget that we presented to you that the roof cost is in there. And that's at a cost of $40,000. So we need to work harder on improving this building. And there's other ways that we're, I'm going to show you another couple of slides too, on the Witchard Building. This building houses our heating and air conditioning program, our graphic communications program, and a number of faculty offices. So it is important and central to what we do as a campus. Get my glasses on so I can see the amount on this. The Witchard roof is $55,000 projected. What you see here is the Witchard boiler. You can see out the back that this is across the alley from the Vernon White Building. The Witchard boiler is the original equipment for this building. And it is in need of replacement, modernization. It will improve our energy costs and it will, we have to do it now or we're going to have something similar to what we've had with a couple of other buildings. The Witchard boiler replacement is $48,000. This is a job that needs to get done. And it's important for this building and for all of our programs. Also in the Witchard Building, and on the proposed list to you, we had carpet replacement for both Fulford and Witchard. And that's not the full carpet for both these buildings. These are designated rooms. This is an example of the carpet in the Witchard Building. You can see the stains. There's actually safety problems with tripping over ripped carpet. And so we need to get that done. And we would like to go ahead and do that this summer if possible. The Fulford Building, as you know, houses our health sciences programs. And that's very important. And we have some major problems with some of the lecture hall carpet in that room. And this is the boiler for the Vernon White Building. You can see the old boiler on the left-hand side, which is actually the original equipment from 50 years ago. We now use the unit on the right side, but it is running through its life cycle. And so we need to do some replacement for that, too. We are thankful to you for your allowing us to use some fund balance for an energy management system for the Vernon White Building, which is the oldest building on campus and one of our major facilities. But we also know that without doing this sort of thing, we're just going to run into problems. And it's one thing, coming back to you and asking for use of fund balance. It's another thing dealing with the issues of stoppage of program, relocation. We're so crowded, we don't have room to shift people to another space. So that creates some major problems. So we have these projects that remain challenged. And that is the largest component of our proposed increase, $275,000. And we have a five-year plan, which has other projects that need to be done. This is just the worst examples that we need to address as soon as possible. We don't want to see a system, a situation develop as we had with the Leslie Chiller because it really created major challenges for all of our programs. Okay, the next thing I want to talk about is the issue of funding for salaries. Now luckily, that's not something you have to worry about very much since you basically, by state statute, support our facilities in maintaining the property at Pitt Community College. But I think I've shown a variation of this slide to you before. And it shows how woefully funded the community colleges are compared to other education sectors. The public schools, K through 12, receive over $5,300. And this was from 2011, 12, per student, which is 30% more than what we receive from the community colleges. And the public universities, again, this is 1112, receive over three times more than what we receive. I'm not complaining about that. But what I am saying is that our salary levels are modest for our employees. Again, that's not your concern directly, except in the case of those personnel that serve in areas funded by you. For example, maintenance workers, public safety workers, people who are funded out of county budget. We do not provide supplements for any other employees such as faculty. But we do support these people. And if, that's if, the state is able to provide any kind of an increase, and I've proposed a 2% increase, just guessing what the state might be able to do, we would like to be able to keep our salaries equitable and give a similar increase to these personnel. That's why in the proposed budget, we have an increase of $26,887, which would provide that 2% just for this small number of employees. The county manager's proposal that I received yesterday shows the increase of our budget at 2.2%. And I thank the county manager for considering us for an increase. However, this is much lower than the average increase that we have received over the last six years. The average increase has been 5.8%. That even includes the 0.5% decrease in 1112, a period when our enrollment was really growing. And we know that your resources are stretched. But we also know that we need a certain amount of money just to maintain our physical plant and to keep things moving in a positive way and not to create greater problems in the future. We know that there are many pressures for you, on you, for limited funds. However, you have stated that the priority for Pitt County and for the commissioners is education. So we'd like to see some preference or some recognition that we are a sector that is growing, that is essential to the economic development of our area, and that is not only an investment for the immediate situation, but for the future. We not only bring a lot of money to Pitt County that wouldn't be coming here otherwise from the state, about $43 million. But we also are able to provide programs through tuition waivers, such as the law enforcement program, the fire and emergency EMS program. Even high school students who take classes through Pitt Community College do not have to pay tuition. So we are a catalyst for education and training at all levels. And we'd like to see, if possible, some consideration for that. I also have a slide here which tells you how your funding compares to other counties in the state. At the most current information, the state average for all community colleges, that's on a per-student basis, is $910. Pitt County funding per student now, not counting this proposed budget, is at $620. Last year, I reported that we were number 43 of the 58 community colleges. I'm sorry to say that we've dropped to number 44. So we are not in an enviable position in terms of how we relate in terms of funding support from you. And we'd like to see that changed, if possible. This is a summary of the budget proposal that we have presented to you. Again, the Goaz Phase Two and other energy costs at $150,000. The facilities, repairs, and renovations, which are immediate needs. We must deal with these needs right away. All right, $275,000 salary increase. Again, we don't know what the state will do, but if it's 2%, $26,000. If it's 1%, then it'll be half of that. Capital outlay, we have not increased our proposal for capital in the 11 years I've been here. It's been at $75,000 during that whole amount of time. We're studying to see if in the future we may need to increase that. But for now, we've proposed the same level of capital support. So a total request of $5,622,000. And we realize that, again, your funds are limited, but we would like to have your consideration. And I'd be willing to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Dr. Massey. On behalf of the Board, your observation is correct. Education has been the top of the ladder, so to speak, for this Board. And we continue to feel that way about it. Of course, the purpose of the information being presented to us today from Pitt Community College and later the Pitt County School Board is to supplement with additional information or information pertaining to the request that has been made. Having heard that, having heard the supplement that has been presented here this morning in the way of the presentation by Dr. Massey, are there any questions of the Board of Dr. Massey? If not...
I'd like to just ask maybe the manager, the raise, how many Pitt County employees are there at PCC that we're responsible for that you referred to? You said there were not very many.
Yeah, do you know the number of positions funded by Pitt County? That's counting public safety in your area. About 15.
Mr. Manager, did you need to respond?
Yeah, I was going to just mention, obviously, Dr. Massey and I sat down with his staff and county staff on the budget and went through it, understand their needs. And one thing I did encourage him and the community college to look at was the concept of the guaranteed energy savings and what we have done in terms of improving our physical plant in terms of HVAC and lighting and windows and the whole gamut to reduce energy costs. He did commit to say that he and his new facilities director would do that. The other thing I was kind of mentioning to Mr. Holder was that possibly some of the capital requests, the roof, the boiler, and so forth, maybe we could relook at that as a fund balance appropriation since our fund balance is where it is at. It would not dramatically affect that fund balance to do a couple of those. So if the Board would like, we could bring that back.
I would like for you to look at that as a...
Thank you, Dr. Massey.
On observation, you said those people were 15?
About 15 positions.
Well, I think that is low or that $26 million for the 2% salary increase is high because...
$26,000.
About $26,000 for 15 people that are 2% raised.
I'll check on the numbers again for you.
That would make their average salary very, very high.
I'll do some checking on that.
But anyway, I just would like to say, we really do appreciate what PCC does for this community. It is a major asset to our community. We talk about economic development. PCC is a major arm to that economic development because they're providing training for companies that come in here. They need additional training. And PCC is on the spot to develop whatever training they need. So thank you very much for what you guys are doing there.
Thank you.
I'm not trying to get into salaries because I think that's really up to you all as far as the people that you all hire. But these 15 employees are not people that we actually say. You take the money that the county gives you and determines how you can use that money to hire additional personnel without having to use your state money and that sort of thing, correct?
Right. We are, state statute indicates that the county's responsibilities are certain and we follow those guidelines.
Exactly. And I would like to also support what Commissioner Gary said. I think you all do the best job in the state for us to be funding you 44th. So I don't know whose fault that is that that's happening. But every day and every month, I see new and wonderful things happening at PCC. And they do directly affect this county. And not just in economic development, but in improving our own citizens and their quality of life. So I commend you for doing the job that you do with the amount of money that you get. Thank you.
Mr. Elliott, did you want to say?
The fund balance, it may be wise to wait until June 30th to see where our fund balance literally hits. We have a projected percentage there. We feel confident it's going to hit that because that is, again, a conservative projection. But then on July 1 or soon thereafter, then to make a fund balance appropriation for those one time, you know, whether it's carpet, a boiler, those type of things, consider it at that time.
Thank you, Dr. Massey.
We do work hard to get the most out of every funding dollar that we receive. And I know Dwayne and Scott have been great to work with. We'll continue to do that, both state funds and county funds. And we just appreciate your support. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Dr. Link? Appreciate y'all coming down early. We didn't mean to rush you up, but we wanted to be in line to step when we needed to. It's your program. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. First, Chairman Owens, Commissioners, we certainly appreciate this opportunity to be here, talk about Pitt County schools. It's obviously become my favorite subject. Just a couple of quick things about what's been going on in Pitt County schools. I know I shared a few things a month ago, but we are, we've visited some other schools, and we have seen some STEM labs that are being used. And actually, I have several principals and some board members going the next two days to see those STEM labs in Craven County, and that's something we'll be implementing in three middle schools in the fall, as well as hopefully with the help of Pitt Community College in East Carolina and the Economic Development Commission through the grant we're working on, be able to put that in all of our middle schools. Every school that has a 6, 8, including the Kates Schools, would have the advantage of those in their buildings. We also have created what's called the Pitt County Virtual Schools Academy, Pitt County Schools Virtual Academy. We're still, still pretty new. That'll kick off this fall. We're going to start a little bit small, just make sure we get it done right, but what that'll, that will give more kids, again, it's more kids, more opportunities in the schools. And that's where we're going to start at the high school level. We expect that could even expand into some middle school opportunities down the road, but we'll copy a little bit of what like North County Virtual High School is about, but this will be taught by our teachers. It'll be taught part face-to-face, part blended, so that'll be just, again, it's all about opportunities for these kids, and that's what we're trying to do in Pitt County schools. It's just give them what they need, so when they get ready to graduate, they have the choice on where they're going to go, whether it's to the military, whether it's Pitt Community College, whether it's to East Carolina, another four-year institution, but it's their choice. That's what we want our kids to have, have that choice. Can't say enough about the working relationship with Dr. Massey and Pitt Community College in East Carolina on the things we're working on. You know, we're working on early college at the, at the Pitt Community College. As far as I can tell, it looks like everything's going forward, so we're really excited about that, that coming around in another 15 months or so, not this fall, but the following fall. So, those things are going well. At this point, I think I've got Michael Callen. Everyone knows Michael, the finance officer. That's him to come up and talk about the budget with us.
Good morning. Thank you. As you can see, we've got a lot of interesting things going on in Pitt County schools. It's a new era, and it's been a pleasure to get to know Dr. Linker and to work with him over the last several months. And the direction that we're going, we're definitely going in the right direction here at Pitt County Schools. And they say that experience is the best teacher. I believe this is my 12th opportunity to come present a proposed budget to you, the Board of County Commissioners. And I remember about the first time I did this, I was very nervous, and I still am nervous when I do this, had a lot more hair, and I don't think, if I'm being honest about it, I don't believe I've had a true appreciation for what you do for Pitt County schools. Have learned a lot over the last several years, and if we've seen where we've been with concerns to our fiscal operations, like the state budget, significant reductions there, reduction in funding for over 100 teacher assistant positions, reduction in funding for over 50 teacher positions, and most damaging to us, the uncertainty from one year to the next, not knowing how the state budget might actually impact our operations. We've seen, you know, up and down with our revenues as far as federal concern and what we've been able to do there, but the one constant through this whole entire process has been the support that we've received from you guys. And not only the support, but the confidence you have in the leadership to do what is needed, to provide the instruction to our students on a daily and yearly basis. And not only have we seen that confidence and support, but we've also seen an increase in the investment that you guys have made into the students of Pitt County. And not only has, does that build a true sense of appreciation from staff such as myself and superintendent, but also the feeling that we know that we could not do this without you, and that everything that we do is a reflection of you. So, on behalf of Pitt County School students and staff and our teachers, I'd just like to say thank you. Thank you for everything that you do and for truly making education the top priority here in Pitt County. Before we get started, like, well, look at this dude. What is this guy doing? He's trying to walk across a tightrope, across Niagara Falls, and at this time of the year, I think that's how we all kind of feel. We've got that burden on our shoulders with the responsibilities we have, and I was showing this to my wife, and I was like, you know, what my luck would be, I'd get almost all the way across, and some birds would perch on the end of that bad boy, and I'd fall right over. But again, that's where, that's the sense that we have, and the many, many needs of all the agencies that report back to you and the limited amount of resources that you have to deal with, with those needs. And also taking into consideration the profit, you know, the equitability across all the programs and, and the best interest of Pitt County citizens as a whole. All we can do is strive to work together to meet those needs, knowing that we might not receive everything that we may ask for, but in the end, we all know that we stand here to look for the best interest of the citizens of Pitt County. That is our goal, and we'll work together in order to do that, and knowing that the message of this is that guy did end up getting across, so there is a, at least I think he did. So, but for the purpose of our conversation, we're going to assume that he actually did make it across to the other side. With concerns to the proposed budget for next year, it does include appropriations of approximately $38 million, of which $37 millions appropriated for operations, another $340,000 in the rent agreement, and another $750,000 for a capital allocation. The budget does include a proposed increase of approximately $2.2 million, $1.2 million in fixed costs, and another $1 million in new money requests. What I'd like to do is spend a few minutes just talking about each one of those components. The fixed cost increases are the dollars that we feel represent the dollars needed in order just to maintain the operations of Pitt County schools. $954,000 increase in the cost of salaries and benefits and $250,000 increase in other operating expense. The $954,000 increase includes a 7 percent increase in beginning teacher salary. I'll touch on that here in a second. A projected, like Pitt Community College is doing, we're projecting as well, a 3 percent increase in other state employee salaries and incremental cost of benefits. The operating expense includes utilities increases as well as liability insurance increases. Now, if you've lived in the state of North Carolina over the last several months, and you've watched any local news, you've probably heard about the proposed increase in beginning teacher salary that the House, Senate leaders, as well as the governor, have been discussing. That includes a, an initiative to increase the beginning teacher salary up to $35,000. Currently, all teachers with between zero and five years of service have a beginning salary of $30,800. The goal is to, over a two-year period, adjust everyone between zero and 10 years of service up to a minimum of $35,000. So, over a two-year period, we would see a 7 percent change in year one with beginning teacher salaries and another 7 percent change in year two. Well, how's that impact us? Currently, we have 196 teacher positions within our classrooms that are paid at the beginning teacher salary, $30,800, that are funded with supplemental revenues, state low wealth, and local appropriations. Approximately 119 positions funded with low wealth, and now the 77 positions with local appropriations. This, again, this goes back to the importance of the dollars that we receive from you and steward of those dollars to put them back into the classroom and use them for the betterment of our students. That's 77 positions funded with local operations and another 119 with low wealth. In other words, that's 196 positions we would not have in our classroom in regular classroom positions, AG positions, EC, CTE, and so on, if we did not have supplemental revenues such as low wealth, as well as local appropriations. The impact on local dollars, just to be able to maintain the funding for the 77, is approximately $235,000 increase to the budget. Now, it's worth noting that that's a one, year-one impact. There's another year-two impact for the, on the second round of this, all things held constant. So, again, if this moves through the legislature, legislature like we expect it to, we could be looking at $235,000 in year one, $235,000 in year two. New money requests. Included within the $2.2 million increase is approximately $1 million to increase the teacher supplement by 1 percent, as well as to provide additional dollars for development of our teaching staff. The hats that our teachers wear today are many. It's unbelievable the duties and responsibilities that they have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. And when I saw this chart, I was like, this is just convoluted enough to help make the point. You've got a mentor, they've got to be student assessors, a curriculum evaluator, a learning facilitator on the job role model, teaching role model, and at some point in time, they actually have to be lecturers, they have to be teachers. There was an article in the News &amp; Observer this week that was titled "North Carolina Public Schools Not Broken Yet," and I'd like to still read a couple of the paragraphs here very quickly. Says, "With an ever-expanding and more demanding roles we expect teachers to play, the jobs they do with shrinking resources is nothing short of heroic. While many children enter the school able to read and write, others do not know how to hold a crayon or identify colors. Many live in single-parent households or have parents who cannot afford food or rent or do not speak English. Many have disabilities or struggle as learners for a variety of reasons. If we expect teachers to prepare and motivate students, we must place the highest priority on the recruitment, training, support, retention, and inspiration of those teachers. Investing in our teachers will yield returns for our students and our local communities is an investment we cannot afford not to make." And I'd like to read that first sentence again. "With an ever-expanding and more demanding roles we expect teachers to play, the job they do with shrinking resources is nothing short of heroic. In many ways, you could say it's God's work." Because I know for myself, you know, I'm a CPA, I'm not an educator. I didn't go to school to teach, I went to school to be an accountant. But just as I've gained a higher degree of appreciation for what you guys do over the last 10 to 12 years, so too have I built a greater appreciation for the roles of teachers today. There is not a more difficult job in this world than being a public school teacher, and for anybody that believes otherwise, needs to go to a South Greenville, to a Belvoir, or any other school in our school system and volunteer, spend some days in those classrooms, and you will quickly see how important and how difficult their job is. Now, with concerns to Pitt County schools, our job is to build great students, and in order to do so, we've got to build great classrooms, and in the process, we have to build great teachers. We need to do that through recruiting and retaining great teachers, developing great teachers, and compensating great teachers. That is a part. Just look at what we've been able to do over this past year. We started a sign-on bonus of $650 per new teacher, $2,500 sign-on bonus for teachers in EC, math and science, those areas that are hard to fill, as well as reinstated the beginning teacher supplement. Now, again, thank you. All hats off to you guys because we could not have done this without you. The $200,000 we received through last year's budget process allowed us to do this. So, again, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for allowing us to make this happen for our beginning teacher staff and to become more competitive in being able to recruit staff across the region. But it doesn't end there. We need to keep pushing forward. We're requesting a 1 percent increase in that teacher supplement, as well as additional dollars to help build and mold our teachers, and we can't do this alone. We have to do this within a partnership. If I look back over the years, and this is kind of small, it's all, it's in your paperwork there, but our teacher supplement hasn't changed in the last 10 years or so. I think the last change was back in 2003, '04, where it went from 4.75 up to 5 percent. In fact, it went backwards for a few years there, where the Board of Education made the decision to eliminate the beginning teacher supplement. Now, that's on us. We did that as a board and as a school system based off of the financial difficulties that we were placed under. Hindsight being 2020, might not have been the best move to make, but it was done at the time that we thought would be the best interest, and we've corrected that, again, through the assistance of you, the county commissioners. When you compare our average teacher supplement to the other top 50 counties in the state per the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners survey, it averages about $2,500 per teacher. Counties between 20,000 and 30,000 students average $2,600 per teacher, whereas Pitt County Schools stands at about $2,000 a teacher. If you compare Pitt County Schools line item by line item, you can see we do stand just above Robeson County. If you look at what it would take to increase the teacher supplement by 1 percent, it would be about a $736,000 investment, which would potentially yield an increase in that average up to about $2,400 per teacher, which would help bring us more in line with that of the top 50 counties, as well as counties of similar size to us. Finally, capital outlay budget. Capital outlay budget, the $750,000 we receive in category 1, 2, and 3 funding is utilized to, for, for projects that are recurring in nature, pretty much. We have allocation to our schools for technology, replacements, and additions. We have painting projects that are done on a rotation, replacement of a maintenance truck on a rotation, as well as replacement of activity buses that are on rotation as well. And again, I say thank you. It's an honor for Dr. Linker and myself to come before you and to present our needs, and not only at the same time present our needs, but to say thank you for everything that you do for our students, and, and we would appreciate if there's any way that you could look at your budget and find a few more pennies that could be pitched out there. We will, I'd like to think that we would do everything we can to put them to, to great, create use, and efficient, effective use for our students. And I'll turn it back over to Dr. Linker.
Thanks, Mike. By the best finance, school finance officer in the state, Michael Callen. Any questions? Or, I'm sorry, that's your...
We want to also thank you, Dr. Linker and your staff, and for the good job that y'all do with our schools. As Dr. Massey alluded to earlier, education is one of the major focal points of this board. And again, the budget that you presented has been presented to our manager, and he has there in turn gone back recommendations to us. And the purpose of this meeting today is to just reinforcement of that, and we appreciate the presentation and additional information you brought to us here today. That having been said, Mr. Eugene James.
All right. Today at 10 o'clock, the governor is supposed to make a very important announcement pertaining to classroom teachers' salaries. That's at 10, and at 2 o'clock today, the lieutenant governor is also, do you know what is in their plans, and you do not?
I was watching it back there before we got up here, but the governor hadn't got to that, that point yet, so...
Right, so that could change entirely what is being said.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to bring that out, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Anybody else over here?
Being a retired educator, as a teacher and a school principal and working at the university level, this is not a new problem. It's been around a long time. I, I commend the county schools over the past few years, working so well with us based on our budgets that we've had to come up with. We have not cut, over the years, reduced. We generally increased each budget year, which is not true in other counties during, particularly during the onset of the recession and that sort of thing. I think it's important for the citizens to understand that this budget is presented, but once the money comes to the school system, it is really out of our hands as to how you use it. That decision is made by you and by your board, determining what you think is the best way to use that money to promote good education for our pupils. One of the things that concerns me, and it's not really a big concern, but, you know, the supplemental salaries, you know, salaries is the job of the state, and I understand about the cuts and all of that, but that was kind of a choice that was made by the board and by the leadership. So, I think that's one of the things that's going to be difficult to, you know, say we're going to do this to raise that. But I, I commend our manager and finance department in seeing again that we are not decreasing, and I'm happy for that, and I'm sure that there are going to be parts of this budget in our discussion and our talking with our finance director and our manager that there may be some leave way that we can improve, but, you know, that's how it is with all of the departments. So, thank you again for your presentation.
Dr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I want to say that I'm, it's a pleasure for me to serve as liaison on this board to the Board of Education, as I did one more time this past Monday night. And it's obvious to me that the, the school staff and the, and the elected school board is doing the very best job they can to provide the need, for the needs of the students of Pitt County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we thank you and have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay, now... Okay, now, let's see here. All right, is it the pleasure of the Board at this time to have any further discussions or questions or directives, or is it your pleasure to wait and hear further from the other agencies that want to come in and make presentations? We have another meeting scheduled tomorrow morning at 8:30. Then we have two more scheduled after that, Day Three and Four, to hear from various and different agencies. What's the pleasure of the Board?
I'll let you call the shots, Mr. Chairman, what you want us to do. I don't say that often, do I?
No, I don't know, we've never agreed on everything, Gene, but we've always respected Ellen's opinion.
Yeah, but I really...
And I appreciate it. But I think that's a good reference, and, Mr. Manager, we will, let's see, do we adjourn or...
Recess. Recess.
We want to adjourn today.
Recess. Recess until tomorrow.
Do we do that by motion?
Yes, sir.
I say move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, let's vote. Thank you. Have a good day, and we'll see you tomorrow morning. 8:30. Yes, sir.
I did? Oh. Maybe I did again. Oh, I did.